Do we have any opening comments?
Yeah, hi. Hi, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. The Board of Commissioners is here to represent everyone in town, and we strive to be sure our decisions address the needs of all. We're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. Hey, lucky you. You're still lucky. I'm supposedly over COVID, but I'm having symptoms again. I just got a negative test, but I'm not gonna make this very long because I feel like nasty. So if you're not vaccinated, quit debating society, debating society. Get it done, please. Emergency. We had met with the three local EMS providers and tonight we will be determining how we're going to move forward effective September 1st through the end of the year. About navigating a clear path forwards, ensuring all of our residents are served, that they're served equitably, and that it stays that way moving forward. That's a wrap. Last night, the zoning update task force concluded its work in developing a framework to which to build a new zoning ordinance from. I believe it'll go on to planning commission and people will get a look at it. It'll be a lot of discussions, but as a two-year project, we're really happy to have that part of it done. Cleanup time. Social media can be a wonderful way to stay in touch with friends, but it's not the place to get factual information. Case in point, this recent post from a local Facebook group. Despite a previous statement, the five-year plan for the Ingleside Golf Course is not actually on the agenda for tonight, but that doesn't mean, yes, right, it's not. It's absolutely right that it's not because it was on the agenda last month. We had a five-year plan that was presented as a three-year plan. It was a plan that was pushed by the Board of Commissioners, created by the Golf Committee. It was presented as promised. I can say that all of us had concerns about the lack of a marketing plan, and there was a lot of work still to do on it. Anyone who wants to see it, it is it begins at forty-two minutes and twelve seconds of the posted video of our meeting. It ends at fifty-seven minutes. Got a lot of details that we'll go into later about the finances, but I'll just say this, in at the end of 2019, the golf fund had a negative balance of $561,469. As of today, that balance, at the end of August, that balance will be plot positive forty-four thousand, six hundred something, and we anticipate the end of year 2022. It'll be around seventy-three thousand dollars. Count Township is open for business. Nothing is ever perfect, but it's our township, our community, our home. Look out for count. We can all be a part of the solution by yearly spreading the good news about where we live. That's it.
All right, Mark, I do hope you feel better.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you very much for that opening comments. Next on the agenda, we have citizens to be heard. First, I'll reach out to our audience here at the Township Building. Any citizens to be heard on agenda items? If not, I'll reach out to the Zoom world.
None at this time.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have presentation for the DVR PC, the LED light project. Mike Fuller?
Actually, that has been moved to the next meeting.
Okay, that has been moved to the next meeting. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Lauren Smith with the Downingtown Library.
We can't hear anything if it's if somebody's talking.
Thanks, Josh. Is the microphone on?
You can just hold it. You hold it until it turns on.
Is that better, Josh?
Much better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Josh is one of our trustees, and we appreciate his service on our board. So we want to thank Cowan Township for their past support of the Downingtown Library. As you well know, Cowan Township supports two libraries, Downingtown Library and Coatsville Library. We appreciate that very much. Our libraries are an extremely important part of our community, but we do need funds to operate, and that's why we're here to ask for additional funds and also to make you aware of programs from the library. Also here tonight, introduce Lauren Smythe, who is our new director. But I will mention that our goal is to have each one of our communities that we serve provide at least three dollars per capita to make sure that we have a sustainable budget. That's what we need. For a number of years, we have utilized our reserves and we over the past year and a half, perhaps, we've gotten away from that. We now have a positive budget. We've gotten additional support from a number of municipalities, including Cowan Township. We appreciate that. We need to continue to move forward, and Lauren will tell you about these things, but and I don't want to steal her thunder, but I will say one thing that when Lauren came to us and since she's been with us about three months now, she said that she's been aware of other libraries that have more facilities, more staff, and a larger budget who do not provide as many programs and services as we provide in the Downingtown Library. I think it's wonderful for our staff and our volunteers that work there. So I'll get off here and introduce Lauren Smythe, who will really tell you about the library. Lauren's our new director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Is my sound check good? Okay.
Josh, sounds good?
Good.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Jack, for feeling out the technology issues for me ahead of time. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for adding me to your agenda tonight. My name is Lauren Smythe. I'm the Director of the Downingtown Library, having started in April 2022. I come to Downingtown with more than fourteen years of experience in public libraries, the majority of that in nearby neighboring Montgomery County. Along with introducing myself this evening, I wanted to just share a brief update on the library. But first and foremost, I want to thank the Township Commissioners and the county staff for your continued support and generosity of the library. You're an important partner, and we want to be just as strong as a partner to the township, so please never hesitate to reach out if we can help you to serve the residents of Cowan Township. We're just wrapping up summer, which is my main update for you. Summer is always the busiest time for public libraries, and Downingtown Library has experienced one of the busiest summer reading programs I've seen in my career, particularly for a library of our size, as Jack mentioned. We had more than fourteen hundred people sign up for the program, and we had fifty-plus teen volunteers helping to make the program happen. We had a five hundred and twenty-five people show up to our June tenth summer reading kickoff, and we had more than one thousand, one hundred people go in and out of the library that day alone. We are literally buzzing with activity, and we're looking forward to continuing to welcome people back to the library this fall as we transition back to full services and hope to continue to reach back to pre-pandemic levels. We're hoping that you will continue to support and help us to sustain the library. Our current goal, as Jack mentioned, is to get each of our supporting municipalities to a contribution rate of three dollars per capita. Five dollars per capita is considered the state standard, but we know that this is an incremental process over time. So the goal now is three dollars. We know, of course, as Jack mentioned, you also support our partnering neighboring library, Coatsville Library, and that you are served by each library. So that, you know, that three dollars per capita really would be the combined number. So a dollar fifty per capita for Downingtown Library. We appreciate your consideration for that, and the Board and trustees and I are keenly aware that as a municipality, you have many priorities and demands for your on your budget. My previous library is up for twelve years, was a municipal library, so I'm very well-versed in all of those discussions and all of the priorities that you have when you are working on your budget. So we appreciate that consideration, and what we'll be doing is sending a follow-up letter after this meeting in the next few weeks for you to consider with further information. So we really appreciate that consideration. The library is on the cusp of tremendous growth. To work to manage this growth, we hope to earmark at least an estimated thirty thousand dollars in our 2023 budget to get our staff salaries to a minimum of twelve dollars an hour and to make other commensary and cost of living adjustments around the two to three percent range for the other library staff. About half of our staff currently make under twelve dollars an hour. By fairly compensating and retaining our staff, we will be able to continue to offer high-quality services while planning and meeting the continual demand for increased services that we're seeing. We know that county residents, along with the township staff and commissioners, support and use the library. More than four thousand and thirty-six residents as of right now have Chester County Library System cards. Each card usually means services for more than one person and sometimes for an entire family. So we can't just say four thousand people are served by that card, those cards. It could be double or more than that. In the past five years, we have seen our total library cards increase thirty-nine percent to more than ninety-six hundred cardholders as of this moment. Our programming circulation numbers also continue to grow, and all of this growth is in spite of pandemic-related closures and adjustments to services. I invite you all to visit the library. If you haven't been in in a while, you will see the community re-engaging with the library literacy and shared public spaces. As I mentioned, for your further consideration, we'll be reaching out with the library in coming weeks from Board President Jack Hines and myself detailing our request for support. I'm leaving copies of our 2021 annual report, although we're very close to 2023 now. That is still useful information if you have not had a chance to see it, as well as my business cards. Please do feel free to reach out at any time if I can provide any further information. Thank you for your time today. I look forward to working with all of you to serve our shared community, and again, thank you for your continued support and for considering our requests. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lauren. Commissioners, any questions? Josh, I know you have a lot to say about this.
So
Here to your heart.
Yeah, it is my privilege to serve on the trustee board. But Lauren, could you take a minute and just talk about how adults use the library services too? Because I think there's a misconception that it's just children that use it.
Yeah, absolutely. So we certainly see many children and families in the library, but we we see adults, you know, adults with children, but certainly adults who are using the computers. Lots of times, I know we just had someone in this afternoon who's planning to come back tomorrow, who is using our computers for job searching. Obviously, adults are checking out lots of our books, our materials, using our e-resources, things like our hotspots. We have hotspots available for people to borrow for internet access if they need it for a certain period of time, museum passes that many adults check out and use as well. And really also, I would say, a lot of our programming for adults really, especially after the pandemic, we're seeing how people are just craving that community, which we know is so important for your continued health throughout your life and your well-being as a person. So beyond our children and teens programs, we have book groups for adults. You know, there are all sorts of programs, our ESL group that meets virtually still right now, but that's a great community of people who get together. So really, you know, we serve adults in in many ways as well. So certainly, you know, lots of lots of children. If you've been in the library this summer during the busy time when school is out, you'll see many, many children, but we're really providing support for parents and adults of all ages as well.
Perfect. You know, you think of a library and all you think about is showing up, looking for that one book you want to read for the summer, so but there's so much more that you offer. We really appreciate that.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to public comment as well. We have any public that might have some questions about the resources available here at the library? No hands raised?
None at this time.
Yes, very true. Yeah, Jack mentioned a really great point. We are a member of the Chester County Library System, so you have access to all of the holdings of all of the libraries throughout the county, as well as, you know, we do borrowing throughout state systems as well. So it's really a very large collection of print and electronic ebooks and materials.
Thank you. And hopefully everyone attending will reach out to a library this week. Thank you very much, Lauren. Thanks, Jack. Ms. Enni, if it's okay, we do have a representative from the Coatsville Library, Pete. And yeah, instead of having you wait until the very end, I know you're not on the agenda, but and I know you just had a few things to say, but
I have a few things to say. Welcome. Hello, board. How are you?
And your full name.
My name is Peter DeMayo from the one of the board members from Coatsville, and I'm not on your agenda, and I just wanted to reiterate, because I'd been in touch with you about a month ago, just to thank you for your donation to us this year. We very much appreciated what you have given to our library, and also the newsletter coverage has been phenomenal. So thank you for that, and I do want to tell you, we have a great diverse board. I mean, our board is so wonderfully diverse. It's a great group of people, and I can honestly say the staff is great. Our librarians do a phenomenal job. Our patronage is up to seven, eight hundred people a month from from previous. Our computer usage has increased. The upgrades, our library's totally upgraded through the whole summer, everything. When you walk in, it's a brand-new library. So we will be having on the twenty-sixth of October, an open house for all the municipalities that filter to us. So Shina Bethala, who's on our our board, is handling that, and you'll get an invitation from her, but you'll be with with Coatsville and East Fowlfield Valley, South Coatsville, Modena, et cetera, and all those that come. Now, this is a non non-library item, and I want to say I'm a member of Our Lady of the Rose Church, and we are hosting on September twenty-eighth, and I have an invitation for all of you. And I'm working with Officer Miller from from Cowan and Ms. Law, Laws, Law, Ms. Law. Yeah, and they've been wonderful to work with. So we're doing coffee with the chiefs, which we're doing Cowan, Coatsville, East Fowl, Valley, West Cowan, West Bradford I went to today, and there may be another two in there. And our point is to get all the communities in the western part of the county together because everybody's always been doing their own thing, so we want to put everybody together. I've gotten great response from all the police chiefs and all the township buildings that were reaching out into the banks, the communities to come. So this is from eight-thirty to ten-thirty in the morning. I have an invite for all of you personally and one for the township. And it's a good way for all of us just to come and just socialize and really get everybody together. So and thank you from the library again for everything, and I'll reiterate what they said. The librarians do a phenomenal job. So wherever you go, applaud them. They are they are gems in society. So thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and once again, thank you, Lauren and Peter, for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp. We have the Act one fifty-seven ordinance. She online?
Hi there.
Hi, Kristen.
Hey, Kristen.
This is the tag team. It's not the one fifty-seven, it's Act one sixty-seven. This is the Stormwater Management Ordinance. We started talking last at the last meeting. Just to refresh the board's recollection, the County Water Resources Authority put together a revised stormwater ordinance that's required to comply with the state Act one sixty-seven. That's where that number comes from. That is the Stormwater Management Act of Pennsylvania. In 2013, the county put together a model ordinance that county adopted and has been following ever since. The 2022 model is updates to that model ordinance. There's not very many decisions for the for the county board to make. Most of the ordinance you're mandated and required to adopt to be in compliance with the state law and to be in compliance with your MS four permit requirements. Aero Engineering has taken the lead on modeling your ordinance to adopt the county revisions. At the last meeting, we talked about some of the significant choices you have to make. The most important one is a new section, seven oh six, is being added to the ordinance that deals with the inspections of stormwater facilities. We did have some clarification, and I'll let the people from ARO, they're next on the agenda, so I'll just let them jump in. I think Andrew is here. I know Casey, I think, is in the audience as well. So they put together a nice memo dated August seventeenth that answered a lot of the questions that were raised at the last meeting. So they want to jump in.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen. My name is Andrew Talea, and I am from Aero Consulting, and I've been working with Kristen, in addition to the township staff, to go over the draft ordinance and talk about what it consists of, and specifically what we've been talking about over the past few weeks are just some optional inclusions, new inclusions, and based upon the last meeting, there were a number of questions that the board had posed regarding the ordinance. So I'm here to speak to some of those questions in detail. So the first question that was asked is is it a requirement to include inspections for twenty-five-year storm events under this new ordinance? And according to DEP's 2022 standards, the answer is yes. It is a requirement to ensure that all stormwater BMPs that are constructed after this ordinance is adopted are inspected after twenty-five-year storm events. So so the answer to that question is yes. And so there is an optional inclusion as well, whether if the township wants to take on the responsibility of doing those inspections. The township can also require the property owner to do an inspection in the event of a ten-year storm event. Initially, DEP wanted municipalities to inspect all stormwater BMPs after a ten-year storm event, but I think after some pushback from some some groups and some individual municipalities, they have rescinded that ten-year requirement, but they are requiring a twenty-five-year storm event post-inspection by either the township or if the township would defer to the property owner. But the twenty-five year is the minimum requirement for post-storm inspections. The next question was, what is the estimate for the township to consult out the inspections? And so before I give you a, you know, an answer to that number, there is a lot that goes into that consideration of what the cost would be. So the first consideration is, you know, how long does the inspection take? Is the stormwater BMP in good functioning condition? If it's being maintained by the property owner and we don't find any source of illicit discharge, you know, we can be onsite, do our inspection and off-site in under, you know, half an hour or an hour, where the cost might be, but just ballpark a hundred dollars, you know, for somebody to go out to go out and do that inspection. There are other costs associated with inspecting stormwater BMPs, such as researching the property beforehand to ensure that all agreements and plans are in in hand of the inspector. If a stormwater BMP fails an inspection, the township, if they're doing the inspections, would have to write a letter to that property owner summarizing the inspection and outlining the remedial action that's required of that property owner. There would be the cost to potentially do a reinspection on that property. And as I said before, if if something like an illicit discharge is found, such as there is, you know, oil, you know, going into the basin or coming out of the basin or any other pollutant, that will require going through the process of documenting an illicit discharge. So, you know, best-case scenario, potentially, we can be, you know, on-site, off-site, in under an hour. But there are times where I've been to the basin for multiple hours doing an inspection. So it can vary depending on the site, the BMP type, and the observations that are observed by the inspector. And so typically, what we like to do for all stormwater BMPs, so currently, we do annual inspections at minimum of all stormwater BMPs within the township to ensure that they are functioning correctly and to ensure that we can credit them within the township's pollution reduction plan to show that we are treating areas of the township with stormwater management. So typically, we like to do as many inspections in a day as we can. And again, depending on what we find, we could get done ten inspections in a day. We could get done thirty-plus inspections in a day. It really just depends. So our plan or our recommendation would be to continue inspecting all of the current BMPs at, you know, at minimum annually. Currently, all of the O and M agreements in terms of when each BMP needs to be inspected at minimum varies. So we found that at least if we do an annual inspection of each existing BMP, that helps find any major structural issues with BMPs before there's a, you know, catastrophic failure. So I guess in summary, you know, we can do that, you know, the township can consult those out. And there's also a number of ways for the township to potentially capture the costs of doing those inspections if it chooses to contract those inspections out. And there's and every township and borough does it differently throughout Chester County. Some municipalities choose to put it on the property owner where they, you know, send out a letter saying, hey, you have to inspect your BMP within a certain date. Unfortunately, what I think is the common theme is that, you know, compliance is minimal at best. You know, I've seen compliance anywhere from ten percent to forty percent when putting it on the property owner, where the townships or burrows have to end up doing the inspections themselves anyway. So, you know, one option is to put it on the property owner, but if the township wants to do it internally through a consultant, there are options on how to capture those costs, including setting up some some kind of stormwater fund so that whenever a new stormwater BMP is constructed after this ordinance is adopted, you would determine a length of time where you would charge upfront costs, figuring out how many inspections you anticipate doing, including the annual inspections for the first five year, tri-annual inspections after the fifth year, and then anytime a twenty-five-year storm event occurs. So you would, you know, we could, you know, update the fee schedule to account for that and set a designated formula for capturing those costs through an upfront stormwater fund over a period of time. The other option would be just to state in the O and M agreement that all inspections conducted by the township to ensure compliance with the stormwater permit will be passed along to the property owner, flat and simple. And that way, you would just charge whatever the costs are, you know, doing that inspection of that schedule for that property. That would also include any, you know, inflation costs that go up and down over the course of time. And then the other option would be to potentially set up some kind of stormwater fee across the board for the township. Based, you know, there's a number of ways to do that, and we could certainly help the township figure out what that fee should be. But those are the three options in terms of how the township could potentially capture those costs for long-term BMP inspections. And so, you know, my opinion would be that MS four is not going away. So if the township is going to take it on to do the inspection through a consultant, you know, one of those options should be considered. And then the final question that I have here is, well, the third question is, what is the workflow that other municipalities are using to streamline BMP inspections? Again, it's all across the board, but what I would what I recommend typically is to have some kind of database or tracking system so that you can account for all the BMPs within your municipality, track when that BMP was installed, under which ordinance version that BMP was installed, the type, any associated plans, agreements with that stormwater BMP, and also tracking prior inspection results, and then the next inspection date of that BMP, all within a central database. And then from there, attempt to streamline as many BMP inspections into as short of a timeframe as possible. And that would also then include sending out letters to all of the applicable properties that will be inspected at least three months prior to to inform that we'll be coming out to do the inspection. Hopefully, that would help them do any preventative maintenance before we come out and have to do an inspection. Typically, also with HOA, sometimes I've even been asked from HOA heads to to be there when we do the inspections so that they are aware of their responsibilities for their stormwater facility. And once we do the inspection, obviously, we would write any letters to any applicable parties that failed our inspection, outlining why they failed, and giving them a timeframe of when we request that they remediate the issue, and then we would do a reinspection within that time after that timeframe. And then if they comply, fantastic, we have accomplished, you know, the whole point of doing inspections in the first place. If they don't, the township would have the ability to levy any fines and penalties against that property owner, as well as within the new ordinance, it does state that if they do not maintain the stormwater BMP to the ordinance standards, that the township can actually remediate issues and and, uh, bill the property owner, uh, for that, uh, uh, remedial effort. So that would be my suggestion, you know, generally on how we keep track of BMPs inspections. And so, uh, I guess my, my last point is too, is that we are going to have a number of BMPs that are built under different ordinance regulations. So, uh, up until the time of when we adopt this ordinance, all of the current BMPs still should be inspected at least annually, in my opinion. And again, that's for, uh, ensuring that they function properly. But also again, because of the township's pollution reduction plan requirement. But again, having some kind of central database to track all that information is critical. And so, uh, on top of that too, the next five year cycle, which starts in 2020, which, uh, will begin next July 1st. We don't know what regulations could come down the pipe at that point. They, they may ask us to update the ordinance again, uh, with, 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 with new requirements for stormwater O and M. So, um, but, but, you know, I think the bottom line is we just need to have some kind of central tracking system to keep track of all the attributes that I described for all the stormwater BMPs within the township. So, uh, those are responses to all the questions that I have down, uh, that the board provided last time. Anybody has any additional questions at this time specific to BMPs or inspection, I'd be happy to answer those questions at, at this time.
Andrew, thank you. Uh, let me ask the board, uh, commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
I know that's a lot to swallow all at once.
I, I think the question of cost, I think Paul asked that and we were kind of trying to gauge what the cost was going to be for the homeowner, HOA, whatever it is per inspection. Uh, and that's what we were trying to gauge.
So I, Josh, it's Kristen. You know, obviously it's the, the engineer's hourly rate and, and I'd say an average would probably be 30 to 45 minutes. It's somewhere between, you know, 95 to $125, depending on what level engineer they send out. You know, high end would be, and that is if there would be severe problems. High end, I would say two hours, Andrew, would you?
Potentially, I mean, again, if we get into illicit discharge where we find a pollutant that needs to be reported, it, you know, it could be out there half a day potentially depending on what it is. But, you know, I would say typically, um, you know, most inspections are within an hour. But, uh, again, that's, that's if we're coming out physically doing the inspection and, you know, again, that's assuming that for the most part, that facility is generally working okay. So, um, so yeah, you know, to, to do an inspection within an hour, you know, ballpark a hundred to $200 maybe. You know, depending on, you know, what, what, what year it is, the location and other factors that may, you know, vary the time that we actually spend on site documenting conditions of the BMP.
Okay. And then.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Josh.
And, and then just, uh, uh, so I'm clear. Anything built after this will have that requirement. Things built prior to that will not have that requirement, correct?
Well, currently, all of the BMPs that are within the township that are built as of this date do have requirements associated with maintenance. But what's different about these, the BMPs that are currently built within the township as opposed to the, any BMP built after the adoption of this ordinance is the inspection frequency. So, uh, you know, again, most of the BMPs within the township now vary between what their O and M agreement says between a year to three years. Whereas the new BMPs that are built after this adopted ordinance, it's, all of them are at least annual inspections. Three years after, and again, the, the 25 year storm event is, is one of the biggest, uh, differences and requirements of BMPs that are adopted, that are, uh, built after this new ordinance is adopted. You know, we will be required to go out at that frequency, uh, compared to the current BMPs where it, it just varies depending on which stormwater BMP it is. And so, uh, the idea is that, you know, currently Arrow, you know, we do annual inspections and we are going to continue to be doing at least annual inspections of all BMPs that are currently within the township. And, and we'll be doing that as part of the MS4 program and, um, you know, there really isn't unfortunately any teeth to go back now and say, you have to start paying a fee for, you know, inspections. So the idea is that for any new BMP built, you know, potentially put in some kind of, you know, inspection fee structure or fund or something to capture those costs. Because the frequency of inspections is going to increase for all new stormwater BMPs.
Let me jump in for one second. So just so everybody's clear, the current ordinance does require inspections. It's just not a section of the ordinance that requires it. There's no section 706 in your current stormwater ordinance and that's the new section that the new 2022 model is requiring you to adopt. That either has landowner inspection at certain frequencies or municipality inspection. What Andrew was referring to, any stormwater facilities that were built after your 2013 ordinance was put in place, those property owners were required to sign an operation and maintenance agreement, which I think you guys have seen. There, there, um, it's a form agreement. And within that agreement, it specifies that the landowner is responsible to perform the inspection. But it doesn't in that agreement reference that, you know, it does say that if they fail to do inspections or if the township believes that the storm facility isn't functioning as it was designed, then the township has easement rights to go onto the property, perform the inspection, let the property owner know that it's not functioning as it was designed and mandate them to make repairs. So that language is in those agreements that's recorded against properties that have performed stormwater management facilities since 2013. But I know at the last meeting, we were talking about whether you were required to go back to things built after 2013 to put these new inspection regulations that are found in section 706. The answer to that is no. So anything built from 20, really it's January 24th, January 1st of 2014 was when your first model ordinance went into effect. So facilities built from January 1, 2014 up until the date that this ordinance, the new ordinance is effective, what's going to govern and control when those facilities have to be inspected is your stormwater management agreement that was recorded against the properties. Anything that's going to be built under the 2022 ordinance will be governed by section 706 as you choose to adopt it. And we will mirror the stormwater agreement. That is still a requirement that those get recorded. But the language of how and who does the inspections and when they're done will mirror what section 706 says. So now it'll be in two different places. It'll be in the ordinance itself and in the agreement that is recorded in the chain of title. The other thing, depending on how you choose to fund this, it may be just in your fee resolution that you adopt, that you simply state, you know, pursuant to your stormwater code, any inspections that are conducted by the township of BMPs will be, you know, charged to the property owner. And then either you specify the rate or you do like what you do for consultant fees now. I mean, whatever the hourly rate is, that is in place for that particular year is one way you could do it. If you choose to do some sort of upfront fund, one of the options in the county model, recommends or suggests that one method to do it is, and we talked about this a little at the last meeting. Say, for example, I'm coming in and I have to do a stormwater facility on my property. You could, as part of the application fee, collect an upfront fee that you would then put into a fund that would account for the inspections that need to be done in the future. So that's one way to do it. I think one of the concerns about doing it that way is those costs are going to rise as inflation and as your consultant fees get higher. So you're really just sort of guessing at what that fee would be. Not saying it's a bad idea. It, again, that's something to think about. Again, uh, the other, the other thing would be if you ever choose to do what you have the authority to do is to impose a stormwater fee separate and apart from your taxes. Um, if that's something that you choose to go down that path, that fee could also be a source of revenue to cover these inspections. So I'm not suggesting that you need to answer the how you fund it just yet. I mean, that could be something that you do. The ordinance itself doesn't specify that you have to say how you're going to fund it. If you choose to do it, you know, through your fee resolution or through a storm or a fee, that's something that can be decided after. But in terms of how, who's going to do the inspections, that part of it does have to be decided for us to complete section 706.
Thank you, Kristen. Commissioners, uh, do we have, uh, other questions? I, I did have, uh, one. As far as that, how many properties, uh, are we talking about that are going to be affected by this? And presently, you know, I, I know from this, this point forward, anybody that's going to have a new system would be part of this, but presently, how many homes or how many properties?
You mean?
Truly be affected right now.
By the new ordinance?
Yes.
This would only apply to properties that build a new stormwater BMP or retrofit a existing stormwater BMP to the, to, to a modernized stormwater BMP. So the answer would typically, would most likely be none. This would really only apply to, to, to properties that choose to build or to retrofit a BMP after the ordinance is adopted. So all of the current BMPs would adhere to whatever their current O and M agreement states.
Okay.
Oh, was your, was your, Paul, was your question, how many facilities have been built since 2013? Is that what? Yeah, that's what I thought his question was.
I think off the top of my head, I believe we have at least 70 or 80 stormwater BMPs within the township built at different times.
What are they owned primarily by HOAs or by individual owners?
It's a mix. I don't know off the top of my head what the breakdown is, but a majority are privately owned. Either by an HOA or, or a private property owner, but I, unfortunately I don't have that off the top of my head with that breakdown.
I think it, I, I, I don't either, but what I would best describe it as is, you know, new developments have the O and M agreement. So it, it is not, um, if anything basically went through a subdivision or land development process since 2014 and we have an existing O and M, that is who it affects. So we wouldn't be going to, you know, Mrs. Smith's house on, on ABC Street who's been there since 1936. That's not what, it is primarily new developments that these O and M agreements exist for.
But just a question to that, if Mrs. Smith added a thousand plus square feet, we would be going to her home.
Correct. That is correct. Yes.
Okay. And, and anybody who would be adding anything to their backyard, it would be accumulation of the square footage since 2014 or 2013? I, I thought that's what we.
Yes, that's right, Paul.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get a feel for how many folks would actually be affected by this and then, and then really come up with an idea of what our cost would be. You know, cause if, and how many homes we have here, 4,500 homes, 5,000 homes in, in county township? That's a lot of homes for stormwater fee. But if we're only affected the 70 to 80, as you're saying?
Oh, I, I think I understand your question now. You're asking if, if the stormwater fee was initiated, how many homes would be affected?
Right.
Is that your question?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to determine.
I think a better way to put this, and this is all in the planning that we've, you know, we, we're trying to walk through and getting the GPS layers and, and things to that effect. I think moving forward, this would become a part of the cost of our stormwater annual maintenance. I think is a better way to put it and, and essentially we would roll that process in to the total cost of the maintenance program. It's just initially, we don't have that fee. So therefore we, we need to have some funding mechanism.
And I, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around how much of a fee would it ultimately be? I, I think that's where I'm coming from because, you know, if it's only $10,000 for, for annual, you know, inspections.
And, and that's what we, we have been conceptually discussing that behind the scenes. You know, we have a minimal cost right now, but when we are looking at the overall cost of our stormwater management in upcoming years.
There's a lot more involved there.
Exactly. So, so yeah, we're not talking, I, I, at least I don't believe we are. Where's Casey? We're, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. We're, we're talking a minimal, um, amount, but what we're really aiming for is that in the future, if there's a stormwater fee or as we have new O and M agreements, we are describing that in that O and M agreement. So our, our goal is not to, um, you know, create anything for current HOAs or business owners or homeowners. The, the goal is, is that we're trying to meet the mandates that are being put upon us. Keeping in mind, if we have the residents do this individually on their own, they have to do it after every 10 year storm, not 25 year storm. So that, that was why we were leaning more towards the township doing it and using an outside consultant is to hopefully, you know, reduce the severity of that. So yeah, we, we aren't talking a huge, um, situation.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to put it in perspective.
Yeah, we, we really are not.
Okay.
Andrew had good information. I think one of the questions was, and one of the, I would say misperceptions is how frequently the 10 year storm, the 25 year storm occurs. Andrew, were you going to share that information?
Yeah, we have some new figures here. So can somebody share that with us, the, for the storm events?
Oh, sure. Go ahead. All right. Good evening, board. Uh, my name is Carl Schman. I work with Arrow Consulting as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Kristen. I'll point out, uh, some of that information. It does give perspective to, uh, what we're talking about. Uh, and it is rather interesting, uh, since we're celebrating the like one year anniversary of Ida. There'll be other conversations.
Please bite your tongue.
Sorry. Yeah, would. So, um, the two storms in, in the ordinance that's frequently mentioned is the 10 year storm and the 25 year storm. Using information that DEP publishes for stormwater modeling is what we use. Uh, and those amounts, the 10 year storm is 4.57 inches. It's in the paperwork we provided you. And the 25 year storm is 5.6 inches. Going back 10 years, researching through NOAA and Weather Service and some other, uh, local, uh, weather stations. Over a 10 year period, the 25 year storm occurred once. That was last year. Over that 10 year period, the 10 year storm, other than Ida, occurred twice, uh, once in 2020 and once in 2012 for Sandy. So it, it, it's, uh, it's a large amount of rain. It doesn't happen that frequently. When you tie these into what Andrew was presenting on the frequency, once every five years, every, uh, three years thereafter or these storms, uh, then the rates of going out there, if it's a complex, uh, investigation or a simple observation, it all rolls up to not a whole lot of money that we're, uh, trying to, um, project. Uh, it's, it's hard to project when it's based on future permit submittals with their impervious that we don't have, but you know, based on, uh, routine history, it's still in that same order that we've referred to. Kristen, does that answer the question? Give a little perspective on the frequency?
Yeah, I think, you know, even at the last meeting, we were thinking, you know, obviously everyone keeps saying it rains a lot more now and I don't disagree with that, but how frequency, you know, how frequent the 10 and 25 year, it's helpful to put it in perspective with that new requirement in 706, if the municipality is going to take on the inspections. You know, did that mean we were out there 10 times last year or does that mean we're out there once every time we have unfortunately a storm like Ida? So I think that's helpful.
I, I guess my question is, those numbers differ from what Al sent us earlier today. Al sent us, uh, a thing saying.
Uh, they're, they're, they should be in the, um, same magnitude. Uh, Al provided something that gives, uh, a lot of different information on the intensity of the storms and the frequencies. Again, Kristen, you can, um, uh, opine on this as well. Typically, uh, when, when storms are mentioned in regulations such as permitting or this ordinance, it's a 24 hour, um, cycle. So it's the 10 year 24 hour from that chart and the 25 year 24 hour from that chart, um, that Al provided. So those should be in the, again, uh, the four and a half inch range for 10 year and 5.6, uh, for the 25 year. Does that jive with your information, Mr. Evans?
It was, it was me, Josh. Sorry. So you're saying in the table, it's a 24 hour period, not what Al is saying, the three hour period?
Correct. It's, um, it's not defined in the ordinance, but typically it's the 24 hour. Uh, we, we don't get to pick the intensity of five minute, uh, one hour, eight hour, uh, or 24 hours. It's typically the 24 hour, uh, when they, when they reference these storms.
Josh, one of the things, I mean, I talked this, this afternoon was that I think we do need to reach out to the county. And I think the county ordinance does not, these were I, what I've read, it does not specify whose data we're supposed to be using to determine if, what the frequency of the storm is. I think we do need that to be clear and I think we actually want to add that to the ordinance so that even though, you know, we might learn that today, we want it to be in the ordinance that there's no question as to whose data we're using. I think that the. I think that the issue that you guys are talking about over what time event, it's also important to nail that down. And the county, I think the county will have an answer to that question.
Yeah, because what what scares me a little bit is typically, so that means that it's open to interpretation. So if we can make that very clear in the ordinance, that way people know what they're doing, because you get a new person in charge of stormwater, they could say, no, we're using the 12 hour data. So I I just want to make sure that's very clear.
Great point. And then, Kristen, is that something that needs to be done by September 30th, or is that something that can follow up?
No, I think I'll reach out. I'll reach out tomorrow. I mean, the gentleman that I work with, I'm forgetting his name right now. When I had questions on this model ordinance, he answered me the same day. He was very, very helpful. I want to say his name was Corey. I think it's probably a question that's been asked by other municipalities. So I I have a feeling he'll know the answer right off the top. If not, I actually have a call scheduled with Jan Bowers, who used to be the head of the Water Resources Authority from the county on another matter next week, and I can always raise it with her as well. But I do think we should get clarification and insert it into the ordinance. I think that's easy enough to do. But I guess we're looking for guidance. I think really Section 706 is the biggest, you know, missing piece of the puzzle in terms of finalizing this to get it before you for authorization to adopt. I don't know if you guys, what what your thoughts are, if you, it sounds like your staff and and want wants, you know, the option to have the municipality perform the inspections. And in terms of how you fund it, that can be something you can continue the dialogue on.
And I did have one other question about this. You had mentioned, Andrew, you had mentioned the illicit discharge. If that was found, is there fines involved or is there?
Yes, there is. I can answer that. The ordinance, the ordinance already has that section in the illicit discharge. And there are fines and penalties, violation and penalty section, just like most of your ordinance. So so there are there are mechanisms to issue notices of violation and issue fines.
Okay. And and just, I guess, if I'm a property owner and and I have illicit discharge, but I think it's coming from my neighbor, is that also addressed?
Yeah, I mean, typically, what we do is we, one, identify what the discharge, you know, you know, typically, you know, especially in Chester County, there are dry weather flows where you look at a storm pipe and there is something coming out, whether it's just spring water, excess stormwater left in the system, or a true illicit discharge where it's, you know, household chemicals or, you know, runoff from agriculture. But, you know, the process is typically identify what the discharge is. Is it illicit? And then from there, following the storm system up the upstream flow and trying to identify is it coming from a inlet and trying to identify who the responsible party is. So, yeah, just because you find illicit discharge in a storm base, and it's not necessarily from the property owner at that storm base, and it could be from your neighbor washing their car in their driveway, or it could be from, you know, a commercial business that is inadvertently or inadvertently dumping something within the storm system.
Commissioners at Trey Stackhouse, just just a quick input on that, just so you know that, I mean, we we do, you know, that occurs now. We, you know, on multiple occasions, we've written notices of violation for illicit discharge. You know, a lot of times, it could be, you know, somebody draining their pool into the stormwater system that they haven't dechlorinated, or somebody hasn't maintained their basin, you know, hasn't maintained their basin properly. So we, you know, we currently do that based on our existing ordinance.
Thanks for that input, Ray. All right, commissioners, any other questions? Because I did see a hand raised from the public.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes, Ms. Spalding.
Sorry, I just had one question. I you were talking about residents, and I understood what you were talking about there. But this ordinance does apply to commercial industrial properties as well, correct?
I to every property. It doesn't matter what your zoning classification is. It matters what level of impervious cover you add or what level of earth disturbance you conduct.
Okay, then following up that, my question is, projects that are, this is going to be passed, when?
They they're supposed to adopt it by September 30th. So likely, it will be at one of the next meetings, either one of the one of the meetings in September we're shooting for.
Okay, projects that have already been submitted. So things like the K Mark, the apartments, the commercial properties that have submitted their projects but don't have approval, are they subject to this?
No, they're subject to the 2013 ordinances.
So they're grandfathered under 2013?
Right, but there's not really that, there's not, there's actually not very many significant changes. They are still required to do very significant stormwater management. In terms of the level of management, it's it's virtually the same. The only real significant difference is this new Section 706 in terms of the, you know, municipality taking on the inspections and what frequency the inspections must occur at. But those plans that are in the works right now will still be required to implement and install storm management facilities. And they will be required to record a stormwater management operation maintenance agreement that will specify that for the, I believe what your current agreement says is for the first three years after it's constructed, they need to do an annual inspection. And and as Mr. Stackhouse indicated, that, you know, if if the township ever learns that stormwater facility that was built basically anytime, even something was built in the 80s or the 90s, if it's not working properly, and he does get those calls, the township goes out and performs an inspection and sends notices of violation. Maybe not of the ordinance, but old recorded subdivision plans have, you know, in some instances, they have notes on the plan that require the facilities to be maintained. So just because, you know, you're grandfathered in under a prior ordinance, doesn't mean there's not enforcement mechanisms for the township.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other questions? Ms. Camp, is this something that we just need to give you? Yes, direction?
Yeah, I guess I guess if I'd like to know if the board's comfortable with the option where the municipality is the one performing the inspections.
Well, let's take a census, all in favor of having the township manage the inspections. Say aye.
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 All opposed? Mark, you're muted. I'm not sure if you were.
Aye.
Yeah, he raised, we saw him raise his hand.
Okay. Five zero. All right.
So what we'll do is we'll put that we'll put that provision in in Section 706. Andrew, was there anything else in terms of finalizing the ordinance that we need? I don't believe there was anything else we needed input from them on.
No, I think all of the outstanding questions were specific to that section and how to handle inspections and who's responsible for those inspections. I mean, the only other thing that I would say is if the township also wants to require, so if the township is doing 25 year storm inspections for all BMPs under this new ordinance, do we want to optionally require those property owner owners to submit inspections if there is a 10 year storm event? It is not a requirement. It is just something that is is an option that the township can include as well.
I I think that we are enough onus on on property owners with the 25 year event.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of that right now. So commissioners, any other comments on that? I don't I don't think it would be necessary at this point.
Understood.
So Kristen, we can work with you and continue the dialogue about how we want to structure the language on the fee and the reimbursement. But as far as the ordinance, why don't we put the final version together? I think we're there pretty much. But distribute it to the board in their packet for the next meeting. So the action item at the next meeting will be to authorize advertisement for adoption at your last meeting in September.
Okay, thanks.
That work?
That's more than fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. All right, next on the agenda, Ms. Denny, we have an MOU for Teamsters Union?
Yes, we had discussed an executive session a few weeks ago. You know, the issues of the whole world is having hiring people. Currently, in the Teamsters contract, when we have a new hire, they would be hired at a 75%, 85%, 95%. And in the fourth year, they would get to their full wage. We had gone to the Teamsters and and urge especially to get CDL drivers and especially in preparation for the winter. We are proposing that we skip the the wage scale steps just until 1231 of this year to try to recruit CDL drivers. They were amenable to that, and and I had forwarded an email this evening before the meeting showing the language of the MOU and just wanted to get the boards okay to move forward with this MOU.
Okay, and and this is just for the remainder of the year?
Yes, I and and my thought process is, and that is, is we are really putting a full court press on to try to get the CDL drivers in before winter and the storm snows. What we often get is guys who want to try to work the construction season as long as they can, and maybe in February, they'll come work for us. We're trying to avoid that. We're trying to get them in before the end of the fall.
And no issues once January 1st comes around that we go back to the normal?
No, if we need to renegotiate, we'll we'll renegotiate an MOU. But at this time, that's that's the the plan of attack that we're we're taking.
Considering the labor market today and trying to recruit folks, hopefully, it's beneficial. Commissioners, any questions on this? You just needed approval from us?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good news.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Looks good, five zero.
Just a point of information, looks like we have one of our favorite old Zoom bombers on again tonight. So before calling on anyone, take a good look at that name.
Do not share it. Okay.
I learned my lesson last night.
Next on the agenda, we do have a tabled ordinance that maybe we can finally untable. The consideration to approve the resolution 2022 dash 04, designating the 2022 response territories for the emergency service in county township. Commissioners, if we're interested in bringing the bringing this back for discussion, can I get a motion to untable?
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Good. The resolution has been untabled. Start some conversation. I know you guys had noticed there was a change on the resolution, keeping the Washington Hose as our provider for basic life service or support for the west side of Municipal Drive and still keeping Minquis Fire Company as our BLS service for the east side of Municipal Drive. But there was a change switching over to the AVL system for the advanced life support for, I guess, for the entire township. Of course, Minquis does have the ALS service. I I believe Washington Hose is not equipped as of yet after our discussion. Comments from the commissioners?
Yeah. You know, I'm just kind of going with with what I learned at that meeting, but the three providers that that presented, not one of them was in favor of going to AVL at this point. Possibly a little further down the road as more bugs get worked out. But I I I don't know that, I I definitely don't think that that's the way we should be going on this. I I like Washington Hose on the west and Minquis on the on the east. And I know Washington Hose said that they could probably be ready for ALS in the new year. Minquis is available now at no cost. This is something we're going to have to get right back into after budget season or during budget season to figure out how we're going to land for the for 2023. So I I think that we 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 let Minquis do the ALS for the for the rest of the year.
Will we be discussing fees at that time later in the year?
I would assume during budget season, we may be entertaining.
Okay.
No, it'll be for 2023, not.
2023?
Yeah.
And I did speak with Minquis today, and they are amenable to providing ALS service for the entire township. And say they are ready to do that as of now. So with that, I would make a motion to amend the resolution 2022 oh four to change from advanced vehicle locator on ALS support to Minquis to provide advanced life support for the entire county of county.
My question there would be if Minquis, now granted, and just to bring everyone up to speed, we do have Washington Hose with a substation behind the giant supermarket, and Minquis has moved into the Thorndale Fire Company. And they both located themselves in a perfect spot in the center of our town. So definitely, we have help that will arrive on time either side. With the advanced life service, the ALS, of course, was it Westwood that did their presentation as well, the coming from the north end? Can can we be assured that Minquis would be able to carry our whole township quicker than having Westwood or any other service available on the east side? Considering I live on the, I live on the east side.
So just a a quick point of order. So I made a motion, there either needs to be a second or the motion dies, and that has to come before discussion.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Moving to second.
So I I talked to to Minquis today, and they now are ready to, they they've just staffed up and said they are ready to provide service to the entire township. And like Mark said, I think we 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 can move on this today, solve the problem with Medic 93 leaving on September 1st. If Minquis is not available or or not ready, then the ALS system kicks in on the second call anyway.
So, Mr. Young, just for clarification, is this both for ALS and BLS?
So ALS, it would change the bullet point that says advanced life support shall be provided by Minquis Fire Company.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I know I'm changing the right part. So basic life will stay as is?
Correct.
Yes.
Divided at municipal, and just for advanced life, we'll go to Minquis.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure I have it right.
And I think we we need to dive back into discussion with Washington Hose to see if they're actually going to be ready for the fall and what that cost may be and and make a decision from there. But, you know, this is something that we can't then kick down the road again for another year.
Absolutely. We did have a hand raised from a resident.
Ms. Spalding?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure I understood what you said, and I and I commend you for, hey, covering the whole township. I've been trying to keep an eye on what's going on with the hospital situation because of several family members who are having problems and going back and forth with hospitals. It doesn't look like there's anything in the works that I've seen, or perhaps you've heard of, that's going to alleviate the loss of brand new ones. That being said, I think you're wise to say you need advanced life support. Nobody can tell what's going to happen when you get these people, and they're going to have further to go. It's it's the sad reality of of the moment. But if I understood what you proposed, Josh, you're saying advanced life support goes across the whole.
Yeah, so Minquis would provide service for the entire township instead of the AVL system, which would just be anybody driving by or in in a closer location. I think it it just it these companies need to build a business model that they can operate and continue to operate out of. And I think that that would allow that. And I think that that would allow that. Again, we can make that, we can make a change at any time. This is a resolution, so we just need to make that change if for some reason Minquis can't provide that, we can change that service at any time.
Yeah, I was just hopeful we'll have the coverage because I can tell you when you pick them up, you can't tell what's going to happen.
Yeah, so this.
Between the door and the hospital.
And I would just say that I know county officials are working as hard as they can to find a buyer for brand new one hospital. They did so in the south with Jennersville, so there are people working extremely hard to try to find a buyer to get us a hospital reopened.
I'm aware. It's just the problem is between now and then, but thank you. I agree. It sounds good.
And I think with the reopening of Jennersville, it'll take some pressure off of Chester County and Paoli. So I'm hopeful that, you know, once that's up and running, maybe some of these wait times will come down.
Chester County, for instance, was handing out numbers to the people who came in, some of whom had heart attacks. So, you know, it's getting it's getting dangerous out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on this? We do have a motion in a second. I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's good, five zero. Ms. Tendy, if we can just make those changes on this resolution?
Absolutely.
All right, and just to reiterate, if Minquis is not able to cover the ALS, it does go AVL. That's just part of this whole process. So someone will be at your home to take care of you.
And same thing on basic life support too. If somebody, if either Washington Hose or Minquis is not available, then it does go AVL on the second call.
Thank you. Commissioners, I don't want to see that again until January, okay?
And I don't want to hear anymore AVLSYBS. I mean, that's like getting all that the letters straight was like, what?
All right, next on the agenda, minutes to approve. We have the July twenty-eighth minutes. I think Commissioner Evans had some comments. That's why we held it up from the last meeting? Any changes or you'd already passed that along?
They, Denise sent them out. I sent them to Denise and she sent them around.
Okay. If there was no other comments on it, I'll entertain a motion to approve July twenty-eighth minutes.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. We have the minutes from the August eleventh meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting. Any questions, additions, corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Minutes have been approved. We have minutes to acknowledge for the approved planning commission meeting minutes of June twenty-first. Everyone had a chance to take a look at that?
Yes.
We're good? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 The minutes have been approved. Moving on to the financial department, Ms. Swan.
Actually, before we move on to Ms. Swan, and I apologize. Casey Luland is here and he has an update on all of our projects. And I'm sorry, we got so excited with stormwater.
Oh, Casey.
We skipped right through them and I apologize. So before, you know, not that, you know, we don't want to hear Ms. Swan's finances, but I figured.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt because I know how meetings go long.
He wants one or two.
Just a few, just a few. Evening, Commissioners. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to provide an update to all the various projects that we're working on in the township. They're all capital projects. I've given you a three-page handout showing IDA-related projects, non-IDA-related projects, and then just general stormwater projects that we're working on currently for you. So I'll just run through them quickly and just ask questions as they come up. I'll just do this briefly. So for Hurricane IDA projects, the Board of Commissioners has authorized North Barley Chief Drainage, Barley Chief Swale, North Bailey Road, and the South Lloyd Avenue Stream Bank projects to proceed to bid. We should be bidding those later this month or early into September. And again, we're shooting for project completion by twelve thirty-one on a majority of these projects. The other two big projects we're working on are Fort Municipal Bridge out front and Moore Bridge. We are going to be appearing at the September eighth Commissioners' meeting with about ninety-nine percent complete plans. We're going to ask for permission to move ahead to bid, so we don't miss the next, so we don't have to come back on the, at your last meeting of the month, so we can get the bids out. We're projecting a bid completion, I'm sorry, project completion probably early next year, but well before the March thirty-first deadline of twenty-three to get the projects done. We have several projects completed. Fisherville Road Stream Bank is done and Municipal Drive Stream Bank is done. South Lloyd, I'm sorry. I think that's it for Hurricane IDA. Moving on quickly to the non-Hurricane IDA projects. We have your twenty twenty-two road paving project starting in September. That was awarded to Long's Asphalt. We have a September start for that. I believe they're going to start some of the base repair work the Tuesday after Labor Day, and then we'll start with paving in earnest right away. The Reed Street Stormwater Project that's been hanging around a little bit too long for my taste, we are in final design. I'm also going to be working with the various property owners for easements. We need at least four easements, but then also along Reed Street itself. We will most likely enact several more easements to install the stormwater piping. So we're very close to final design on that. We'll be presenting that hopefully at the September eighth meeting as well. East Fisherville Bridge demolition. We did the pre-construction, well, pre-demolition meeting last week, and we expect it to start in about ten to fourteen days. We're looking at about a three-week demolition project and that'll be done, so we should have that done by the end of September and billed by the contractor, so we'll close that out early October. Lloyd Avenue Signals, obviously they're up and running. I've been there multiple, multiple times. They're working great. I think it's a great improvement to the intersection. The two fifty-eight Horseshoe Drive demolition project is underway. The utilities have been capped. We're still working, I think, on the water service, but we definitely expect probably end of September completion for that project as well. The Spackman Farm driveway paving is included in your twenty twenty-two road paving. And again, that's going to commence in early September. The Cowan Park Bio-Swell Project, I've included a separate sheet on that. The project is complete. And the Bio-Swell Project is essentially designed to improve stormwater quality. It, through the plantings that are done, it's a very specific seed mixture for bio swells. It pulls out phosphorus and nitrogen out of the stormwater and also drops out some sediment to create better water quality. The job is complete. We're waiting for the application for payment for the contractor. And that should be within the next week or so. We'll present that to the board for payment very soon. And lastly, we have just general stormwater projects that were underdesigned, Geo Carlson Culvert, Hampton Road Culverts, Lynn Boulevard, one and two, Park Drive Stormwater Project, and the Williams Way Culvert Project. And also, we're looking at the Bonsville Culvert right down the street here. We're in final design on all those projects and we will bring those to you as soon as they are ready to go out to bid to get authorization for bid. So that is a quick five-minute update on the multitude of projects we have working on here in the township. Any questions? I know that was a lot. If you do have any questions after the meeting, just obviously get with Kristen and we'll get those answers to you about any of the projects.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, I guess we can go back to the finance department. Ms. Swan, how are you tonight?
I can't talk quite that fast, but I'll try to move it along a little bit.
Lot of information.
That was awesome. Just a couple of things to note. We are in the midst of changing the payroll services to ADP, and that is moving along. That should happen either fourth quarter or beginning of the year twenty twenty-three. For residents, just a reminder, nine one, September first, traction sewer bills will be mailed out. Payment due by nine twenty-five. Don't forget the payment options. Auto debit from your bank account or online payments, as well as the Dropbox outside or our finance window and also the good old US Postal Service. Our audit is complete for twenty twenty-one and Representative Fromeley will be here September eighth, which is the first meeting of September to present that. After reviewing the report, I don't expect anything out of the ordinary. It should be a good report that the board would be happy with. Lastly, we have the twenty twenty-three budget preparations underway. Directors, I'll be meeting with you probably by the end of next week with packets. And that is my finance report.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions on it? All right, next on the agenda, motion to approve the general check run is forty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-seven to forty-eight seven fourteen. I don't see any manual checks, so all in favor to approve the check run?
We need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Motion?
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Good, five zero. Give us some checks assigned. Okay, moving on to the mean potatoes, Director's Report. Here we have Police Chief Elias. Welcome.
Hi, Chief.
Sorry for coming in late. But I was here with you in spirit.
We knew that.
Seven thirty. Something I wanted to mention from the July monthly report. We investigated two accidental firearm discharges in parking lots in the township in August. The latter almost cost a three-year-old child his life. Channel six covered the story. They were out here. They interviewed me. One thing that I discussed during that interview, unfortunately, they didn't air, and that is this. So only about forty percent of all legal gun owners have taken a firearm safety course. If you're a first-time hunter, you're required to take a hunter's safety course. If you apply for and obtain a concealed carry permit, there is no requirement to take any safety training on the safe handling, storage, or transport of firearms, which I know it sounds outrageous, but it's true. So I would strongly suggest to anyone who, especially if you're a first-time gun owner, to please just take a firearm safety course. There are just some very basic things that first-time gun owners don't realize, like keeping your finger out of the trigger guard unless you're ready to shoot. And that's what happened in one of the two instances that I'm referring to here. I'm not anti-gun. I'm just pro-responsible gun ownership, so. No, Commissioner Evans mentioned something about this at last month's meeting because the one of the shootings had just occurred two days before that meeting, so I will leave it at that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. An update on police hiring. The three police applicants that you issued conditional offers to, they all started on Monday.
Oh, great.
So this week has been training on policies and equipment and use of force, and Monday they'll actually hit the streets with their field training officers, and the field training program is roughly four months. On average, if we hire an officer who already has experience and they're doing well, there are different milestones along the way. If they meet those, they could end the FTA program a little earlier. One of the three officers that we did hire had experience. Two of the three are right out of the academy. We've already exhausted the current eligibility list and plan on testing again on Sunday, October twenty-third with the Civil Service Commission. The advertisement went out this week. It will be the fourth police officer exam that we will have given in eighteen months, which I've been here for ten years and I could tell you that is unprecedented. A municipality to the east of us who just advertised and tested and typically get sixty-plus to respond had two show up for testing. We advertise on job sites, social media, we're recruiting at local colleges and universities. Until recently, a prerequisite for this department has been that any applicant who applies would have already had to have completed municipal police training, which is ACT one twenty. So if you hear me say ACT one twenty, that's the six-month police training program and in most cases, most people who go through a municipal police academy, they pay their own way through. They're not sponsored or paid for by the department. The testing and hiring process isn't cheap, and we're not achieving the desired results. Police academy enrollment is down significantly, and the majority of classes that haven't been canceled are usually filled with police cadets who've got jobs waiting for them and have been sponsored by a police department. The last time around, we visited four academies, Temple, Redding, Monco, Delco, and the majority of those classes really weren't fertile ground for recruiting because most of them already had jobs waiting for them. The pandemic, and we've talked about this before, the pandemic and the post-George Floyd area has just created the perfect storm. I've been in this profession now for thirty-eight years and I could tell you nationally, we are just in a recruiting and retention crisis. I've never seen anything quite like it before. The last time our township paid to put people through the training was nineteen years ago. We haven't had to do it since. But respectfully, I think in twenty twenty-three, we need to budget to do that again, especially if the class that we're giving, the tests that we're giving on October twenty-third doesn't produce the results we're looking for, where we don't have enough qualified applicants who have already gone through and achieved ACT one twenty certification. Manager and I have talked about this quite a bit recently. If we have to pay to train, we'll be reimbursed by the state seventy-five percent of the training costs and forty-five percent of the applicant's salary while they're in training. And then we would have to have some type of written agreement in place with the applicant to protect the township's investment in the event they dropped out of training, something happened. So I don't know if I missed anything that you wanted to add, but that's kind of the State of the Union. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? I know it's a difficult time now for everybody to try to hire. But glad we have the three new ones, three new candidates this week. Hopefully they enjoy their time here at Cowan, and hopefully they can spread the word.
I, yeah, well, I had this discussion with some of them today. The best recruiting tools that we have are our own people. So.
Word of mouth.
Word of mouth.
Thank you, Chief.
We've exhausted all options for advertisement. I mean, it is what it is. That's all I have.
All right. All right, thank you, Chief.
All right, thanks.
The only thing I would add, Chief, is the one kind of silver lining in this very dark cloud is, you know, some people, you know, it's a significant expense to go to the police academy. Some people have part-time ability. Most of the academies are full-time, you know, to put out that type of money and not know if you're going to have a job. In communities that they allow for, that they provide the ACT one twenty training, it does help with minority recruitment. So that is the one silver lining we do hope comes out of this. Is that someone who may not normally be able to afford this, this is a great opportunity to have that ability. So that is one of, one of the many, you know, one of the things we are hoping comes out of it.
What do you recruit for that from colleges or?
Actually, I just reached out to the state reps office today and was going to talk with them about any ideas that they have that, you know, it would be great if we could get some local kids that, you know, grew up in the Coatsville area, they're familiar kind of with the streets in the area. So I was going to pick their brains about, you know, networks. So I was going to pick their brains about, you know, networks that they have. You know, one network we've we've never been able to really tap into is the Hispanic League Network. So if anybody has any, you know, contacts, please pass them on. We we would love to be able to share this.
And we'll also share it on the NAACP link.
That was, I was just, actually, you you took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to say, Jane, you know, I know you have some contacts at the NAACP. We would really
That would be good to put it on our website there.
Yes, we would really appreciate that.
What about the juvenile detention center? I mean, like, oh, it's serious, like, there are kids that are out there, you know, that don't have opportunities.
It it really is a great opportunity for them to have a career. And, you know, a lot of these kids just may not have known what a civil service test is or known, you know, what the process is to be become a police officer and just thinks it's something out of their reach. And and this brings this closes that gap and brings it a lot closer.
Among the colleges and universities where we're actively recruiting are Cheney and Lincoln University.
Cheney and Lincoln?
And we have in the past, but to the manager's point, you know, it it it's at least six to seven thousand dollars out of pocket to put yourself through a municipal police academy.
Criminal
And that hasn't been an option here for a long time. So I I think we've lost a good portion of our audience when we when we try to actively recruit at those institutions, which I think if if we're willing to pay, I think we will, we hopefully will have better turnout and more interest. All right.
I like it.
Thank you. Next, we have the Fire Department Chief Taylor, Patrick. How are you this evening?
Good, how is everybody? I was getting some flashbacks, not so good, mentioning a certain storm from a year ago. Yeah. And I know, I know what's going on in Dallas and down south and and yeah, Kentucky, so it's
And there's a Caribbean storm coming through this weekend.
You're not going, are you?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, but I'm just saying there there is a storm brewing over the Caribbean coming in this weekend.
So, well, hopefully, we need rain, but not anything like that. So as I digress from that, just kind of want to mention, we're coming into a busy time of year, especially fire prevention. Public Education Officer Kim Madsen does, in my opinion, a phenomenal program for this township. I know Commissioner Kennedy, she comes out every year, she's already gone this past week to your facility. But so that that's kind of starting while Fire Prevention Week is typically one week in October, it's several months long for Thorndale. We do take great pride in in that program. And with Kim being nationally certified for fire prevention, it's it's definitely a huge benefit, and we really appreciate everything she does. So that schedule is really becoming much, much longer. She's reaching out to all the schools, elementary schools, things like that, in addition to the daycares, so that she's going to have a busy couple of months coming up. And as always, our Fire Prevention Open House will be held during Fire Prevention Week on that Wednesday. You can always visit our Facebook page or our website for more information on that. And then the final thing I just want to mention is we teamed up with Serve Pro, Kennett and Oxford, to do a shredding event. So I believe it's up to five boxes, and that will be held on September seventeenth at Coatsville High School. So if you have a bunch of stuff to shred, you'll see some hopefully familiar faces from the Fire Department, and they'll they'll get all that clutter off your hands. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Patrick? All right, thank you, Patrick. Next, we have Ingleside Golf Manager, Mr. Ward. Chris, how are you tonight?
How are you?
Unbelievable.
Talk of storms, kind of rubbing it in because I could really use some rain right now myself. I'll go over the July numbers here. July was another really good month, our best July that we've had since running the golf course. Rounds were four thousand sixty-two compared to last year, three thousand six hundred thirty-four, so about four hundred more. July's revenue, one hundred thirty-one, seven nine one, compared to last year, one twenty-one, six oh nine, so about ten thousand more, eight percent. Year-to-date, we're at five hundred thirty-six, eight six two, compared to last year, five twenty-seven, nine seven two, about nine thousand more, two percent up. That's a a good comparison because last year was our biggest year ever, so we're even building on top of that. Currently, we're about two hundred and twenty thousand up this year. To the overall golf one, as mentioned earlier, we're about forty-five to fifty thousand up, and that includes about two million, as you know, has been, we will have a payment of one hundred twenty-four thousand coming up, so we won't go back into negative. But if we do what we did last year, we'll end up being in the black at the end of this year, and that includes a payment two million dollars that we've paid to the loan since we've owned the golf course. So it's looking good right now. It's going well. With that, you know, we have, I got this weekend, was able to get updated quotes on the equipment that we were looking to get for two thousand twenty, twenty-three possible equipment. One was the golf carts, that's the one that changed price-wise, the fifty-five golf carts. Delivery now is earliest is spring of next year. It would be a seven-year lease with monthly payments of two thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. And next year, we would only be paying fourteen, three, seven, two because of delivery date. So after that, between two thousand twenty-four and twenty-nine, it'd be twenty-eight, seven, four, four. That would be our our yearly payments. And then in two thousand thirty, we would finish out with another fourteen, three, seven, two, would finish out the seven-year lease. Total cost of that lease would be two hundred, one thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. The next mower, the next piece of equipment was the greens mower, same, these are all going to come spring at earliest. Total cost of that is forty thousand nine oh five, financed for three years, and that would be payment for the year would be fourteen thousand nine eighty-nine. And the last one was that rough mower. Costs fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, three years, and that would be eighteen, nine, eight, four over those three years. And those those prices did not change on those, so mainly those carts. So I like I said, I got them late and on the weekend, I was finally able to get them from everybody and have them out there. Other than that, we have that, and that's all I have.
Chris, it's it's Mark, I've got a couple of questions. On your projections that I'm looking at here, you're showing twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four projected revenue and expenses, and then projected margin on them. Or do those numbers include the expenditures that you're for the golf carts and the mowers?
That's all included in there, yeah. And those numbers are based on twenty-three thousand rounds. We're doing, that's kind of our break-even point. We're going to do in the last three years, twenty-six to twenty-eight thousand. And there's no risk seeing a slowing down right now, so we're only, that's based upon our our break-even point for budgeting.
Well, that's good, that's always the best way to do it, that way you're happily surprised later. I I know that at the last meeting I had expressed some concerns I had that the plan didn't, you know, it was, it was just dependent on raising fees and and that that's that's not a sustainable model, and I want to see this as a success. And I had said that marketing, getting a marketing plan together was going to be very important, social media aspect, fixing the website. And I offered to help with that. I haven't heard from you, I'm, I know you're busy, but do you have my email address? Do you said you would take my help then, but I haven't heard from you, so
We've been talking about marketing plan going forward, and we do have a plan that we've talked about a little bit with the committee that we'd like to talk about and go a little bit further into that. It has to do more of how we go about with the staff that we have, which is me and JT Dylan. It was mentioned at one time, and this is just thrown out there, of maybe a marketing manager coming in that could help us do promote work to cash register. And like I said, we mentioned this a little bit, and I'd like to look into that a little bit more, or something to help us out a little bit more. You know, me and JT are two people covering about four or five positions.
I understand, that's why me, who's already stretched pretty thin, had said, I'll help you. And and I know that Commissioner Mullen had had asked that you work with Lisa Swan on this at the last meeting too, that the more heads we get together on this, the faster we can get it implemented and without taking away from the actual functioning of the golf course. Because I know Lisa wants to help, and I know I want to help. When was the last golf committee meeting?
Last one was before our meeting, well, right before, about two days before our last meeting that I was at, the last meeting of July.
Our next meeting, Mark, is on Monday, I believe.
Monday.
Okay.
This Monday.
Cool. All right, so, yeah, it's it it, you know, that wiping out all of that negative fun is is amazing. It's just, you know, we got to keep we can't just be stagnant with this, we have to look with new eyes and and get new ideas out there because there's, there's probably twenty-five percent out of increase out there that we can get by just using marketing properly, so. So just
Now, at this time of year, and the most important thing for a golf course is keeping the golf course in good shape. That word gets out, if you go into bad tree, that word gets out and that, and that right now, that's our main, we have been focusing a lot of
Yeah.
We and JT have been talking about things that we can do. And there are things with the golf committee in the meeting on Monday that we're coming, bringing ideas.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director of Building and Life Safety and Public Works, Mr. Stackhouse Ray. How are you tonight?
Commissioner, some good, how are you? Good. I'll try to focus just on some highlights, but but it's been a busy month for both code enforcement and public works. But the Lomax property, what what we consider phase one, which is really the grading, site work, and some of the stormwater inlets in front of the building, that work actually is getting ready to start. That'll probably start in the next week or two. As part of that project, some some long-term repairs to that back access drive are part of that. There'll be some milling and overlay as opposed to just patching. It won't be the entire drive, but the large portions will actually be mil-, you know, repaired, milled, and overlaid. So like I said, that that project to do just that work will probably start within the next couple of weeks and should be done fairly quickly. Aldi received their building permit, so they're starting, going to start doing the work. Renovation in the Aldi section and the interior Lomax, they're looking at potentially a soft opening, probably sometime late September. A couple other projects that will be coming to the commissioners sometime, probably in September, is CCIU is doing a, what they call toddler center. There's a toddler center on the CCIU campus now, it's basically a modular home. They provide daycare for for students that go to the CCIU programs. They're expanding that program a little bit, and they need to update that building, so they're doing a land development project. They did get recommendation from the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission August meeting to move forward. Colonial Hyundai, Colonial Hyundai is doing a land development. They're doing some additions to their building. And that review is in progress. We actually just issued a review back to them. And Allfill, Forty-Sixty Edges Mall Road, needs to do a conditional use for a land development project they want to do. That conditional use review was just completed and issued back to them. Uh, COVID. We talked about COVID several times, and it's it's interesting because I got con-, I was contacted by FEMA just recently and had what's called a close-out meeting for a COVID grant. Back in twenty twenty, we did file for, you know, COVID, COVID-related reimbursement from FEMA. We received some of those funds initially in twenty twenty-one, and now we actually just did the close-out and looking to hopefully receive a two thousand dollars more to cover some of the expenses that we incurred during those critical times in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Ida, I heard it mentioned a couple of times, I really don't want to think about that either, but unfortunately, weekly, we're we're reminded of it just based on the work. We continue to have our weekly meetings with FEMA. We are submitting project information on a weekly basis to FEMA, and that, you know, obviously, that'll continue through next year. Just to expand a little bit on two projects that Casey mentioned from Arrow, the golf course demo of the of the building. Actually, the contractor was scheduled to mobilize, and we recognized that there's public water still to the building. We had anticipated that it was well-watered, we did not realize there's still public water there. Then, when I had Pennsylvania American Water come out, they cannot find the curb stop. I was out with them the other day, they started tracing the lines, and it looks like the curb stop is somewhere between the building and all the way back up on Porchew Drive. So they're out there and going to start doing exploratory digging and try to, you know, do something to cut off the water to that building so that we can get that demo going. Road program, I just received an update from the contractor two days ago or a day ago, and actually, August twenty-ninth, they will be mobilizing on Seltzer Avenue to start the stormwater work along Seltzer Avenue that has to take place prior to the milling and overlay. So that should start August twenty-ninth. From a public works perspective, the the crew, the crew that we have, and I say that because we're still short four, four staff, we ought to be three as of Monday since the commissioners approved the MOU with the union. They're doing stormwater, you know, maintenance, stormwater projects. They've been working with Abbey and doing some park projects and planning, and we continue to find stormwater systems along the Geo Carlson section that, you know, we're we're in the process of getting quotes to hopefully budget for those projects next year. That's all I have at this moment.
Thanks, Ray, it's Mark. I I have a question. You mentioned the Allfill conditional use package. I know that in November, the Historical Commission had sent a lengthily detailed request for consideration to Allfill, which they didn't respond to, and it was, there was nothing in the packet that we saw this time around in response to that. Do you know if they've been working on a response to that, or if they just absolutely are going to ignore it? And which would not
And I I'll be honest with you, I do not believe they will ignore it. In in our review letter for the conditional use review, we pointed that out, we included your letter, we included that they did not respond to that, and they did need to respond to that. I'm glad, and I do apologize, I should have brought this up. I was contacted on Tuesday by the legal counsel for Allfill, and if I'm not mistaken, yesterday, they were supposed to meet with at least two or three of the property owners at the site to discuss what the what they're doing there and what their intent is there. So on twofolds, number one, like I said, we did say they had to respond to the Planning Commission, or I mean, the Historical Commission in our review letter, and I do know that they, if nothing else, did schedule a meeting with the surrounding neighbors to discuss, you know, what their plans are there.
Yeah, that's great, I I wish that they had actually contacted the Historical Commission and asked if any of us would be there because you know, if someone sends me a letter, you know, I'm going to respond to it, and if I ignore it for nine months, that's an insult. And if they are reminded of it and they don't respond, that's a second insult. And then if they invite other people to meet at the grounds and nobody who sent them the letter, you know, I won't even use the two letters that that describes what they're saying to us. So, I mean, the people who own those properties, they're, they have an investment in it, but this was a Historical Commission matter that they really needed to respond to us. So I appreciate everything you're doing, but maybe you could give them a little nudge. Because I know the pre-, the president of the Historical Mission is not happy with this, and I know the secretary, who is the guy speaking right now, is not happy with this. So, you know, if we take the time to write a really nice letter and we don't hear anything back, that's that's not cool. So and I'm cranky, but this is my night to be cranky, so thanks, Ray.
That's all right, I I am supposed to contact our legal counsel. I did have a message from him when I get back, and he was supposed to tell me how his meeting went. And he was supposed to tell me how his meeting went. That was what his message on my phone was. And I will certainly remind him of the requirement to satisfy the Historical Commission's comments.
Hey, can I ask a question, a favor? You know, this is just the way I do, you know.
Yes.
I know that a couple of the residents have done things by phone that, you know, have blown up on them later. Maybe when you speak to the legal counsel, uh, if you can ask them to send you a summary, an email of what happened, so that we'll have record of that.
Sure. I have no problems with.
I appreciate that, sir. I really do. And I know you're way too busy through all this other, for all this nonsense, but I appreciate it.
No, no, no. It's part of, for the process.
Alright, man. Hope you're feeling better.
Well, I'm getting there as well. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, Ray, appreciate the report. Uh, any other questions for Ray? Alright, I'll open up to, uh, public, uh, questions, uh, for any of the directors.
Mrs. Spalding?
Cheryl.
I'm sorry, can I ask, do you wanna wait till public comments or is this it?
Well, i- is it, uh, for the director's reports?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
I, I wanted to ask about the golf course, and I won't drag this out into a long involved conversation about money or whatever. But I do, I think Mark, Mark pretty much hit the head on the nail. It's time for some really new thinking about the golf course overall. And I actually have a question that I believe, uh, Commissioner Josh, uh, Young can answer. Josh, a couple times over the past couple of years, it has been talked about or bantered about, if you will, that there was a potential to, an idea, if you will, to turn the golf course into a nine-hole course and then take the rest of it and make it into a park. My question to you is, was that ever seriously pursued? So if it was, what was the result of that? And secondly, are you aware of any restrictions or things that would stand in the way of that happening?
So when we purchased the course, we hired a consultant to help us transition the golf course into our hands and help us with that. Um, we, we looked at two things. First, at, at one point, the school district approached us about the front half, uh, of the golf course where the ponds are, about building a new Callan Elementary there. Uh, and then us transitioning the back half to a nine-hole course. Um, we worked with our consultant. Basically, nine-hole courses don't make any money.
No.
Um, and we didn't have, the reason that Westchester Nine-Hole Course works is, one, it's Westchester. And two, it has a food operation and a banquet facility. Um, and that's where they make their. Um, and basically, everybody's a member there because if you're part of county government or, or, you know, things like that, everybody's a. So we, we did consider, seriously consider a nine-hole course, just either a parkland or at one point, we talked, we were in discussion with school district about a, a school on the front half.
But I'm misunderstanding you. That was back in what, two thousand?
Two thousand seven.
Okay.
Um, there are deed restrictions on the property. There are also wetland restrictions. And, um, Ms. Camp's not here anymore, but there, there are a couple restrictions on that as well as easement restrictions. Um, the, uh, first tee, the cart barn, the old cart barn, and I believe some of the fairway on the first hole is, is part of the craft houses property. Um, and we have a right to use that with an easement. Um, so we don't own all of that property up, up front there along North Bailey Road. And the other thing is the bondholders, uh, granted those bonds based on the use. So we would probably have to go back to the bondholders and renegotiate our bonds.
You're talking about the county?
No, the county gave us no money for them. Uh, because, so the actual bondholders that hold the debt, we would have to renegotiate with them.
Okay. But there's, the reason I say this to you is, there are a couple things about this. You know, and as you well know, this has been rolling around with me for a long time. But, you know, when you purchased the golf course in twenty, what, twenty-two thousand?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven. Callant Township was not nearly so densely populated as it is now. You know, we had a lot of farms and places that hadn't been developed. There's a lot of, whether it was owned by the township or not owned by the township, there was a lot of open space, land lane around this township. That is not the case anymore. Um, and I think, and I'm hearing from people as well. It's not just me. Um, you know, the golf course is fine, but it's not a business. It oscillates wildly back and forth between being in the hole deeply or just gra-, just crawling out of the hole. Um, and in truth, you know, you've got this giant hunk of land there that township residents can't use. They can't walk on it. They can't take a dog on it. They can't do anything on it. It's, it's totally sitting there as if it, it, almost, it, it's almost like it's not what it, it's not what it is. It's not a golf course. It's not a park. It's not a business.
Ms. Spalding, it's a golf course, it's a golf course for residents and non-residents to be able to play golf on it.
Okay, I would, I would love to know.
Other open, uh, spaces in our township. And we are trying to elaborate with our Spackman Farm to create a walking, uh, trail or, or more open space for our residents.
Yeah.
But this golf course, and, and let me point out a few things to you, Cheryl. You know, you, you post on, on your, on your Facebook page that, uh, it, it, tax dollars are paying for this course, which is not true. This course is being paid by itself, by the money, the income that is created by, by the, uh, the golf games. Okay, we are actually to the point of seeing black finally. Okay, that, that means it's making the money. It's paying for itself. It's also paying for the loan that we originally took out. And yes, you, you had mentioned that this loan has been refinanced several times. But it's been refinanced in the past to get a lower rate to save our residents the money for that. And also the, you know, for the, uh, for the cost for the golf course. So, you know, the, the golf course, you know, back in two thousand and seven, this board wasn't there. We didn't, except for Josh. We had no say, but we have this golf course and we have been diligently going after it. And we have lowered the debt, or, you know, the golf fund debt from, uh, at, at worst case scenario, six hundred fifty-seven in the negative, six hundred fifty-seven thousand down to a positive at this point. And hopefully, as, as it was, uh, you know, proposed earlier, we may be what, fifty to seventy-five thousand ahead at the end of this year.
Seventy-three.
That additional income that we have, we are going to use to improve this course, improve it by the carts, improve it by the, the lawn care. Okay, and all that money's being reinvested. So it's not a tax to the, you know, it's not taxing our residents.
The six hundred fifty, six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars that was in the hole.
Yes.
That didn't come out of thin air. That was tax money.
That didn't come out of what?
That was township funds.
Yes, it is. It, it is a fund. But it's, it's the golf fund. It's, it's like the, the revenue and, and, you know, income and, uh, law statement.
Oh, I understand. Are you saying to me that the six hundred fifty thousand dollars?
We were in a hole for six hundred fifty-seven thousand. I'm, I'm sorry?
This is, okay, you've got a fund. It has six hundred, and that, you know, it had six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. That money was not funded by taxes. Is that what you're saying?
No, we were in the hole as far as the, the township.
Yeah.
But the golf course itself has been paying it back, getting it back into the, uh, the black.
I, I understand.
Ultimately, this golf course is paying for itself and also paying for that, uh, you know, for the original loan. You know, and just to point this out, I mean, if we, if we scratch the whole golf course idea and make it public land, uh, we still have a debt on that, which would end up being, being taken out of our tax. So, so residents would be paying for the remainder of that loan instead of having a golf course actually pay for it. And once that, once that loan is paid for, it's ours. You know, this township owns that golf course.
How much money is that?
Now that I don't know off the top of my head.
Hold on.
But let's, let's go back to this, this one, the two things. Uh, you had said earlier that it's, uh, it, it, it oscillates wildly on, on the, you know, from the red to the black. Since we took a, took office in twenty-twenty at that first meeting, we made the challenge to turn it around. We started a golf committee in those under three years. The, let's call it, since you wanna say it's taxpayer-funded, let's say the taxpayers lent six hundred thousand dollars to get that golf course going. And it has paid that debt back in those three years. You know, if we can't look, you know, I took, I was not a big fan of the golf course three years ago. I wasn't a big fan of it two years ago. But I can step back and look at the big picture now and say, you know what? This is working. This is turning around. And if we put our focus on the areas of open space where we really can make them magical things, if we get some people working together, we'll be in a much better place. Having a golf course in a township that is about to explode is a very good thing.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Because the businesses that we're gonna be attracting on Lincoln Highway and the people investing through LERTA are going to want facilities. And not everybody wants to go over to, uh, the Downey Town Golf Course, which I think is a bunch of snobbery over there. This golf course here reminds me of Ironstone, where I played with my dad as a kid. It was a public course. It's where everyone, everybody could go and play. The people, the working class rubbing elbows with the, you know, the CEOs. That's why. This township is not going to stay the graveyard and dump that it was allowed to become over time. Everything we're doing right now is moving it forward. And I know you know it, cause I know you see the things that I post.
Oh, I, I don't disagree. We're moving forward at all, Mark, and I, and I think we are. But I remain skep-, skeptical about the golf course because, mainly because, you know, at the same time that six hundred thousand, and I'm not blaming this on you because you guys came in when you came in, go backwards for a few seconds. During the seventeen years the Spackman Farm has sat there,
Mm-hmm.
Money was, money was loaned to the golf course, if you wanna put it that way, loaned to the golf course. If that money had been put into Spackman Farm, we'd already have a Spackman, uh, we'd have a Spackman Park.
What's happening at Spackman Farm right now, Cheryl?
You're finally going to be able to do something with it after seven.
You know, we can sit and say, what if, you should have, you should have, or look, we're doing this now. May not have been done the way that we all would have liked all along, but it's happening now. So instead of looking back and saying, I mean, really.
Let me, let me ask you a separate.
What if you got a group of people to come to the Historical Commission and help out with the Spackman Farm project? Would you do that? Would you go on your site and say,
Absolutely, and ask.
People, get involved. Join the Historical Commission. Start a, uh, five oh one C three. Would you do those things? Cause if you do.
There and I'll put it out there. But, but here's my question, Mark, and it's really for all of the board members. What if the people in this township were to come to you and say, okay, I like all your great ideas about the golf course, whatever, but we really want a park. What are you gonna do then?
Well, they've got a park coming in at Spackman Farm right now. And you know what? If the people want, the people are gonna get what they want.
Okay, that's fair.
People are always gonna get what they want. This is a democracy. But they're getting a park there. And you know, there's another place we could have a park that I haven't given up on yet. So let's keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much for the comments and.
Really? Good, good stuff, Cheryl.
You know, Ms., Ms. Spalding, if we were still in a hole for four hundred or six hundred thousand, I, you know, this would be a different conversation. And, and this is where, you know, you had a lot of great comments in the very beginning of this. But now we are actually turning around the golf course. We've really made headway and it is paying for itself. Uh, so I, I don't see, as you, as you put it there, it's a, a thorn in our side financially here at the township, which I don't believe anymore. It, it may have been three years ago and, and further back, but now it's turning around. It's doing something for this township. And it's not a burden to our taxpayers. So, alright. Thank you very much. Uh, we can move on to additional business.
You have one more person with their hand up.
Oh, we have another hand raised. I missed that.
Mr. DeYoung?
Mark, how are you?
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Mark.
Not, not to, I'll go very short with this. Um, there might have been somebody before me, but I remember standing on that floor about three years ago, talking about the golf course, saying, I'm not going away until we get this thing done. And at that time, the numbers that Mark reflected, that I think we're even more positive. I think we're further behind at that time to the golf fund. Now, it may be a little naive because I didn't know about the, the bond out there. So financial, um, illiteracy on my part there, but anyway, the golf course has made progress. But we need to keep together and move it forward.
Yep.
Who thought it would be back to the, in the black? Um, certainly not me, but I got involved. I, I tried to push as hard as I can. And we've seen considerable progress. And at the point now, we're paying down a fund. If we can own this thing, then it's all profit. And yeah, that's a waste down the road, but it's all profit. Um, so I think we need a little more tweaks. We need a little more narrative, uh, as Mark talked about to, you know, the business plan going forward. However, I also think we need to move forward on the equipment that the golf course needs to order now in order to start going forward. And we're in the financial position finally to do that. I don't wanna ride in the golf cart with a holster to win. Okay, I, I play over there. And I pay my money. I bought a membership. I got involved for every which way I could. So, you know, three years ago, I want that thing mismanaged by somebody else. I wanted it sold. I sold the floor of that building instead of the same things. And here I'm telling you a different story. It is making progress. Could be better. Anything could be better. So absolutely. But I think we need to create a nice narrative of what is the point of golf courses now? Was our future? And, and I don't think you portray out the five years, to be honest with you, on a golf course. Um, you know, banks, when we ask for information from a loan applicant, we ask for three years. Cause they can't drag five years. It, it's a thing going across the board. So I'm gonna go along and I wanted to, um, on support of what is happening now, I wanna make the purchases so we can keep the people coming now. And I just wanna move forward next year and pay down the bond, make more money, make more rounds. As Chris said, we're, you know, the part that was, was kinda missed in this whole subject was he's projecting it on the average of twenty-three thousand rounds and we're getting closer to twenty-eight thousand rounds.
Exactly.
That is huge. That's where your money is. Not, you can't raise the prices every year. Well, you can, I mean, a buck or two, but, you know, you can't raise revenue a buck a, you know, year on the golf fees. But if you can increase golfers, you got a whole, whole other set. So thank you for listening and that's just my input.
Thank you so much, Mark, really. And thank you for all you're doing here.
And thank you for being involved. That's the most important part of this township. It, it takes folks like you that make this thing work. Alright.
Hey, Mr. President, my wife's telling me it's time for the birthday cake downstairs.
Almost, almost. Alright, uh, additional business? Not see any hands raised. Uh, public comment? Any public comment at this time?
Just a quick, I guess, oh, I missed my unread for, um, additional business. Are we, what are we doing with the golf course proposal? Is that on the agenda? Is that on next agenda? Like, what, what are we doing?
Uh, the golf committee, we're meeting on Monday and then we can, uh, present it at our, at our next meeting. Cause we wanna try to make a move on this, on the golf course, uh, or, I'm sorry, the golf carts.
Yep. Okay, excellent.
Any other public comment?
Not at this time.
All right, I will entertain a motion uh for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved. Second, all in favor? Say hi.
Hi.
Hi, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Everyone.
Bye.
All right, bye now.